Good evening. This 28th meeting of the Baltimore City Council 73rd term is now called to order. Members of the council, due to us still being virtual, please note that I recognize you by saying you have the floor. Once I recognize you, please state your name and begin to speak. Our invocation this evening will be given by Dr. Joan L. Wharton, Senior Pastor at Hemingway Temple AME Church in Cherry Hill. Dr. Wharton, we appreciate you joining us. The floor is yours.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we come before your presence this evening. Thanking you for this opportunity to pray for this city. To pray for the leaders. To pray for this session. Oh God, we ask your hand of guidance, direction, and your spirit to lead us as decisions are being made, as minds are being used. We pray, oh God, that this meeting will be triumphant. And that everything that's supposed to be accomplished will happen tonight. We pray for this city. We pray for everything that is taking place to bring total healing to our city. Now, God, we rest this meeting in your hands. That you get the glory, you get the honor, you get the praise for everything that will take place. This we pray in the name of the Father and the Son. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Dr. Joan L. Wharton, for providing those special words. We really appreciate you joining us tonight. You're welcome to stay on and watch your city council, or you can turn on TV 25, or you can go off and continue to spread joy and love and praise to our community. Thank you so much for coming on tonight.
Thank you, thank you.
Now, at this time, we will go into the Pledge of Allegiance. So folks, if you have a flag in the room that you're in or on your computer, please state the Pledge of Allegiance at this time. Thank you, members. We have a very, very special guest and a treat, not only for the city council, but for the citizens of Baltimore tonight for our hearing showcase. From pandemic response to transportation investment to historic wants in a generation ARPA investment, we have worked closely with our federal partners throughout this term. And one name that has not been quiet during this period, specific to all of the things I just mentioned, has been our Senator Chris Van Hollen. He's been a champion for Maryland, but more importantly, for the city of Baltimore during this very rough patch of COVID-19. Senator Van Hollen is joining us tonight and will share an update on the latest and greatest in Washington DC. Senator, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, President Mosby. And I want to start by thanking you and all the members of the Baltimore City Council for what you've been doing during these very difficult times as we work to finally defeat COVID-19 and make sure that the great city of Baltimore has the resources it needs to reach its full potential. And we all know we have many challenges to meet together, but we also know that Baltimore is a great and vibrant city. We need to work to meet the challenges, but also seize the opportunities. And it's been good to partner with you and members of the council over the last many years, but during this pandemic, to try to make sure that, you know, all of our people, all of our constituents get the help they need in difficult times. So what I thought I would do, if it's okay with you, is just give you a little summary of what we've done and where we're going. And then I look forward to any questions and comments that all of you have. The partnership's been really important. And the federal government has tried to be a good partner with Baltimore City and all of you during these times. And I also bring greetings from my colleagues, from Ben Carden, Kwesi Emfume, John Sarbanes, Dutch Roepers Berger, and others, members of our team. It was about a year ago. It was March of last year that we passed and President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan. And the American Rescue Plan has been essential to helping workers and families and school systems and transit systems and the city of Baltimore get through this very difficult time. We, of course, provided individual assistance. Those were the $1,400 payments per individual. Provided extended unemployment insurance for people who lost their jobs through no fault of their own. Provided monies to small businesses through the Paycheck Protection Program and then other programs. And that was extended not just to for-profit small businesses, but also to nonprofits and various venues and charitable organizations. And in the case of Baltimore City, of course, between the monies that the city got as a jurisdiction, its size, it was approximately $641 million. And we look forward to continue to work with you as you deploy those monies for the benefit of the city. Half of those funds have already been delivered and you've already been allocating those together with the mayor. The other half will come in a couple of months as the federal government gets the full report on how the first tranche of money has been spent. In addition, as I mentioned, there was the school money and the transit money. There was also the rental assistance money. And I know the city is continuing to work to make sure that those funds get out so that people don't, you know, get thrown out of their homes because they can't pay the rent and that landlords are able to pay their bills on time. And look forward to continue to work with you to make sure that all those funds are allocated and deployed. So those are, you know, some of the highlights in terms of the city. I will mention, and this is important, to Baltimore's delegation to the General Assembly and to all of us, that the state of Maryland is receiving $3.7 billion in assistance directly to them. That's on top of the monies that went to other state entities to help them through the pandemic. Those are the funds that, you know, have allowed the state of Maryland to be in good fiscal health. And we just need to make sure that all of the delegations in Annapolis continue to work with us to make sure those funds are invested in the best way possible for Baltimore City. And those funds will, you know, those also come in two rounds. The first half of that $3.7 billion has already been allocated, but other funds will arrive with the next tranche. So again, look forward to identifying Baltimore City priorities with all of you with those funds. So after the American Rescue Plan, which was essential to keeping, you know, our economy afloat, we were able to pass the Infrastructure Modernization Bill. And that also is going to be great for Baltimore City and for good paying jobs in Baltimore City. The state of Maryland will receive $7 billion over five years from that investment. So that's $7 billion for roads, bridges, tunnels, transit, expanding transit, and a whole host of other infrastructure investments, including broadband. And one of our goals has been to really end the digital divide. And I know that's been a priority for all of you as well. You know, the pandemic exposed lots of inequities in all parts of our systems. One of them was in the area of access to high-speed affordable internet. And we're determined to work with you to end the digital divide and provide resources to help do that. I know that's been something we've worked with many of you to accomplish and want to continue doing that. So that bill also did some specific things for Baltimore City. For years, I worked to create a fund at the national level called the Reconnecting Communities Fund to try to address some of the great harm that was done in the past from federal infrastructure expenditures that split communities. And the highway to nowhere in West Baltimore really is Exhibit A of that. And so we were able to get $1 billion in a federal fund for that purpose. And we're working with the city and with many of you to make sure that Baltimore is positioned to access those monies. So in that part of West Baltimore, we can really bring communities back together and, you know, create more opportunities and economic dynamism in that area. We also, as part of the infrastructure bill, decided to try to rejuvenate the red line because one of the worst decisions made with respect to Baltimore City was when the governor pulled the plug on the red line, which was an investment that brought great opportunities to the city in terms of good paying jobs. Also, of course, connecting the city and connecting people with jobs and opportunity. And that $1 billion in federal money went to other states around the country. You know, while we had a great loss, other parts of the country were, you know, popping the champagne bottles because they got the benefit of the money that we'd worked for years to direct towards Baltimore and the red line. So we put down our marker and said, you know, we want to get back in this game. Obviously, we need to get a governor, the next governor, who will work with the city and the rest of us, to move that forward. I think all of you know there have been, you know, some changes in the city that will necessitate some changes to the design, but we hope to really push again for that important program. So those are some of the things in the Infrastructure Modernization Bill that will be coming to Baltimore. In addition to the formula funds, and I do want to stress this, in addition to the formula funds that will come to Maryland through the Maryland Department of Transportation, there are these other pots of federal money. One of them I just mentioned is that reconnecting community pot of money for $1 billion. But there are also pots of money for port operations that would go to benefit the port of Baltimore and a number of other pots of money that we can work to access on behalf of the city and look forward to working with you on that front as well. So that's the Infrastructure Modernization Bill. We are now working on the Build Back Better legislation. As I think all of you have seen, that the bill that came out of the House of Representatives was a good bill, was a comprehensive bill. It was something I supported. We simply don't have the votes to get that done in the Senate as is. But we are working to try to keep some of the big, big pieces, like reducing the cost of prescription drugs, like cutting the cost of childcare, like trying to provide funds for universal early education, something many of us have fought for for a very long time, and important provisions to deal with the climate crisis, investing more money in accelerating clean energy deployment and doing it in a way that communities that have been hardest hit and have been often left behind receive a fair share of those investments. And so we're still trying to get that across the finish line. Another very important piece of that, as you know, was the child tax credit, which did cut child poverty in half last year. But it's not good enough to do that for one year. We got to do it permanently and we obviously have to work to get child poverty down to zero. That provision has expired, as you know, and we are working with our colleagues to try to revive it. Mr. President, let me just mention a few other things in closing. On the public safety front, I think all of us recognize that we need to have a comprehensive strategy to deal with the issue of violent crime and public safety. And that means addressing this from the prevention side, the intervention side, and right up front on the law enforcement side. And we are trying to provide more federal resources on all those fronts. Senator Carden and I just spoke within the last two weeks to the Deputy Attorney General of the United States, urging additional federal funds for US Marshals, for ATF personnel, and for folks in the US Attorney's Office. I will say, the federal government has stepped up even the last couple of years, additional resources for those purposes. But we are working to get additional help. On top of that, there are the Community Violence Prevention Programs, which are essential. And I'm pleased that, you know, the mayor used some of the funds provided on the American Rescue Plan for that purpose. We need to take that up to scale. And then, of course, there are other issues. We got to focus at the neighborhood level in terms of addressing some of the underlying issues and challenges. And happy to talk more about all of that in tonight's conversation. So we're now trying to finish up the next round of our fiscal year at the federal level. It started October 1st, our fiscal year, but we've been on automatic pilot on last year's budget. We're trying by March 11th to do this year's full appropriations bills. And I will say that there are a number of provisions that are currently in the bills to help various neighborhood organizations in the city of Baltimore on everything from economic development to helping returning citizens to other, you know, public safety issues, including, you know, neighborhood-based violence prevention programs. So look forward to really partnering with all of you on these ongoing efforts. So why don't I stop there, Mr. President? And I'm happy to try and answer any questions. Welcome any comments. I just want to, again, thank all of you for the work you're doing as we fight this pandemic and all the economic, you know, fallout from it. I know we've all tried to do our best to help all of our residents during this very tough time. And then, you know, work to get back even stronger than we were before the pandemic. And that's what the Build Back Better legislation is all about. So look forward to the conversation and thank you all.
No, we thank you, Senator, for joining us tonight. Not just for tonight, but we thank you for your leadership in Washington DC. We know that you speak to the hearts, the minds, the soul of a lot that has been wronged and created through bad policy of the past. And even in the midst of this global pandemic, you know, you have found ways to help bridge that divide and bridge that gap. I had the fortune of standing with you and the entire federal delegation at the bridge to nowhere. When we talk about connecting jobs to transportation to innovation, but more importantly, about giving back to a community that has been stripped away of its assets, not just through disproportionate amount of disinvestment, but also through just failed policy of the past. And I know that you've been on the forefront of that and look forward to continuing seeing your leadership. And another thing that you brought up was the red line as well. We understand and know that transportation is the Achilles' heel to Baltimore's city's economic success and growth. And it's important for us to continue to drive a mass transit system that we all can be proud of and provide folks an opportunity for upward mobility, for education, as well as career advancement. So again, we appreciate all that you do. Many of the members of this council have partnered with you or written letters to you and expect to continue more of that partnership and more of those letter writing campaigns. So thanks a million, Senator, for joining us tonight.
Thank you, thank you so much.
With that, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the rule.
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed with adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the February 2nd, 2022 proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. Communications from the mayor can be found on page two of the agenda. We now turn to executive nominations. Madam Clerk, please read in the first nomination.
EA 21-0089 Alexandra Grayson, Member, Commission on Sustainability.
This nomination has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee. Madam Clerk, next nomination.
EA 21-0090 Stacy Griffin, Member, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee. Madam Clerk, next.
EA 21-0091 Cedric Lee, Member, Commission on Sustainability.
This nomination has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0092 Jared Lyles, Member, Commission on Sustainability.
This nomination has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee, Madam Clerk.
EA 21-0093 Kevin O'Connor, Member, Board of Fire Commissions.
This nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight. I will now turn to bills to be introduced. Madam Clerk, please read the first bill.
City Council Bill 22-Jax 0197, RPP, Area 31, Towns of the Terraces, Revisions. For the purpose of modifying the hours of applicable parking restrictions for the residential parking plan, Area 31, Towns of the Terraces, reducing the non-permit parking time threshold, establishing an exception to the applicable permit limit and correcting and conforming related provisions. Sponsors are Chair Costello.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk, please read 22-198.
City Council Bill 22-0198, City Property, Naming the Baltimore City Health Department Building to the Dr. Max C.T. Collier Health Department Building. For the purpose of naming the Baltimore City Health Department Building located at 1001 East Fayette Street to Dr. Max C.T. Collier Health Department Building. Sponsors are Chair Stokes and Councilmember Bullock.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk, 21-199.
City Council Bill 22-0199, Firefighter Safety Act. For the purpose of establishing basic operational approaches to risk assessments outlining emergency response rules of engagement, requiring all fire suppression personnel employed by the Baltimore City Fire Department to be equipped with digital audio and video recording devices by a certain date, requiring the implementation of a safety and risk management system defining certain terms, establishing reporting requirements, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors are Chair McCray, Councilmember Ramos, Vice President Middleton, and Councilmember Bullock.
At this point, would Chairwoman McCray like to speak on behalf of this bill?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. And introducing the Firefighter Safety Act, I'd like to take this opportunity to also pay homage to Mr. Charles R. Paylor, who in 1998 became the first chief safety officer in the Baltimore City Fire Department. Unfortunately, Chief Paylor passed away this past Saturday, but he will always be remembered for the contributions he made to the city of Baltimore. On July 24th, 2022, three Baltimore City firefighters selflessly put their lives at risk in service to save others and made the ultimate sacrifice when they lost their lives in the line of duty. This was a devastating tragedy that not only resulted in the pain and grief of families and employees of our fire department, but has also left an impact on the citizens of Baltimore. Although we cannot bring back those we have lost, as a council, we are in the position to abate the grave consequences of future errors. And we can see to it that safety measures and equipment are in place to ensure that Baltimore City does not incur such great loss again on our watch. The Firefighter Safety Act was crafted based on best practices set forth by the National Fire Protection Association and the International Association of Fire Chiefs. It seeks to institute three critical components. It establishes rules of engagement for fighting fires at vacant structures. It requires each firefighter to be equipped with a digital audio and video portable recording device on the scene of fires. And it requires that the department's safety and risk management officer be a direct report to the fire chief so that the implementation and enforcement of safety programs are back with the full authority of this agency head. I would appreciate the support of my colleagues in seeing this effort through, and I do look forward to meaningful discussions on this topic. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. So with sponsors, we have Madam Chair, Councilwoman Ramos, Madam Vice President Middleton, and Councilman Bullock. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, on to 22-200.
City Council Bill 22-0200, Urban Renewal Central Business District, Amendment 2. For the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for the Central Business District to revise the signage provisions, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is Chair Costello.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. We will now move to resolutions to be introduced on first reading. Madam Clerk, please read the first resolution.
City Council Resolution 22-0090R, informational hearing. Fire Department, Office of the Chief, Annual Review. For the purpose of requesting that the chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department come before the city council to initiate the process of annually reviewing the duties of the office of the chief, requiring the review to include an evaluation of the department's efforts to meet performance goals, requesting that the chief, in consultation with the city council, establish goals and objectives for the upcoming year, and requesting that the chief identify service delivery gaps that need to be addressed. Sponsors are Chair McCray, Councilmember Ramos, and Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This resolution has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations on the 22-91R, Madam Clerk.
And excuse me, Mr. President. May I address this resolution that was just introduced, please? Thank you.
Sure, Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. As the Baltimore City Fire Department is under our purview, we, as a city council, shoulder the responsibility of staying abreast of ongoing efforts, goals, and initiatives. To ensure progress, we must instill reasonable measures and maintain a standard by which the Baltimore City Fire Department's efforts are evaluated. Under this resolution, the chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department is directed to come before the city council to initiate the process of annually reviewing the duties of their office. In efforts to serve its intended purpose, this review will be comprehensive in nature in that it will include an evaluation of the department's service delivery performance, the efforts in place to meet their current performance goals, as well as their plans and objectives for upcoming years. Requiring the provision of this information via an annual review is a crucial step towards increasing collaboration and efficiency amongst our legislative bodies and impacted agencies. As my colleagues, I do truly appreciate your support on this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this resolution has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, on to 22-91R.
22-0091R, informational hearing. The effects of post-traumatic stress disorder on first responders. For the purpose of inviting the Commissioner of the Baltimore City Police Department, the chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department, the Baltimore City Sheriff, the chief of the Baltimore City School Police, the Director of the Office of Emergency Management, the chief of the Baltimore City Environmental Police, and the Director of the Department of Human Resources to appear before the Baltimore City Council to discuss how post-traumatic stress systems, post-traumatic stress disorder, compassion fatigue, and burnout affect first responders and to inform the council on intervention programs that are currently in place to provide city employees with relief from trauma and burnout. Sponsors are Chair McCray, Councilmember Ramos, Vice President Middleton, and Councilmember Bullock.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Chairwoman, would you like to speak on behalf of this resolution?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. This resolution is being put forward because every day in Baltimore City, our first responders heed to the call of service. Our firefighters, our emergency medical services personnel, our police officers, and our operational personnel wake up every day to combat the host of challenges that they face in keeping our neighborhood's constituents safe and secure and in keeping our city's constituents alive and well. It is important that the city council puts forth efforts to understand the psychological implications of working as a first responder. And this must be done in efforts to instill the necessary practices which will provide our first responders with the proper supports for their mental health. This resolution invites the leaders of various agencies to appear before the city council to have a much-needed discussion on the impact of various factors which affect the mental health of first responders. And by hosting a discussion on post-traumatic stress symptoms and disorder, compassion fatigue and burnout effect, as well as the intervention programs that are currently in place to aid city employees, we will form a greater understanding of how we can truly show up for our first responders. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see the hand raised of Chairman Conway. I think he would like to be added as a sponsor of this bill. Any additional adds at this time? Hearing and seeing none. ads at this time? Hearing and seeing none. I do see the hand of Councilmember Torrance. Any additional ones? Hearing and seeing none. This resolution has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. Madam Clerk, please read in Twenty Two Dash Ninety Two R.
City Council Resolution Twenty Two Dash Zero Zero Nine Two R Investigative Hearing Addressing Vacant Housing Through General Obligation Bonds. For the purpose of requesting the city administrator, the deputy mayor for community and economic development, the commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the director of the Department of Finance, the city solicitor, and the director of the Department of Planning to appear before the Baltimore City Council to discuss the ways that loans through the Community and Economic Development Fund have helped to eliminate blight through vacant home demolition, provide an overview of product projects that are currently being developed to resolve the vacant home problem in the city, and assess available funding sources that can be used to end the problem of vacant homes in Baltimore City. Sponsors are Chairman McCray, Councilmember Ramos, Vice President Middleton, Councilmember Bullock.
At this point, I'll recognize Chairwoman McCray. The floor is yours.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Through the issuing of general obligation bonds, funds can be contributed to efforts that strategically and step-by-step work to eliminate the blight of vacant homes. In hosting a discussion with the heads of Baltimore City's agencies on navigating this, we can continue to collaboratively work together to produce feasible solutions to one of our city's most cyclical pitfalls. In coming together to address not only the status, but the possible and available solutions to vacant homes in our city, we are making strides and investments into the future. This resolution to address vacant homes is just one step that will benefit a plethora of interrelated factors impacting Baltimore, but most importantly, our economy, sustainability, and quality of life. I am grateful and appreciative of your support on this measure. Thank you.
No, thank you. That resolution has been assigned to committee as a whole. Before we go into Twenty Two Dash Ninety Three R, Madam Clerk, before this hearing tonight, I received a call from Annapolis that the governor actually put back in the Carwin Commission recommendation of the blueprint for Maryland schools money back into the supplemental budget. I bring that up on this call. I believe it was Councilmember Dorsey that was questioning why this council decided to take a decisive effort and send a non-bonding resolution to Annapolis. You know, I thought that was really important that we stuck by the side of our colleagues in Annapolis as they were fighting to get the money back in and showing our voice and our unity behind that issue. And not that we were the deciding vote or decisive action, I thought that it was really important. So thanks to all of you for supporting that resolution. I know the folks in Annapolis are jumping up and down and and excited tonight that, you know, when you fight for something and it works, particularly for the right reasons, not just for our young folks, but for their futures. That's what that, that's what we stood for with them. So wanted to give a huge round of applause to each and every one of you for sending that down to Annapolis last hearing. With that said, Madam Clerk, if you could please read in Twenty Two Dash Ninety Three R.
City Council Resolution Twenty Two Dash Zero Zero Nine Three R Request for State Action Stability for Renters. For the purpose of calling on the Maryland General Assembly to pass and for Governor Lawrence J. Hogan to sign legislation that would provide stability to renters as a matter of fundamental fairness during these economically challenging times. Sponsors are Councilmember Ramos, Vice President Middleton, and Councilmember Bullock.
Councilwoman Ramos, I would like to recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This is a request for state action because this topic of stability for renters is something that this council has been working on for the last couple of years. And we point out in this resolution, five pieces of legislation that will make a significant difference for our renters immediately. And so this resolution asks for the General Assembly to pass and the governor to sign House Bill Eight Eight One Landlord and Tenant Residential Leases and Hold Over Tenants Tenancies Local Just Cause Termination Provisions. This will allow us to pass legislation to create a local just cause bill. And we did something similar last year, but it was based on the state of emergency. This bill passes, and we wouldn't have to do that. We wouldn't have to just wait for a state of emergency. Senate Bill Three Eighty Four, House Bill Six Seventy Four Landlord Tenant State of Eviction proceeding for rental assistance determination. What this will do is ask for the judges to make sure that they can pause an eviction proceeding while an application for rental assistance is pending. This is critical to make sure that all of our renters get that rental assistance as soon as possible and that the courts are helping with that. Senate Bill Six Six Two, House Bill Seven Two Four Access to Counsel and Eviction Special Funds. This is right to counsel. This bill says, let's put eleven point eight million dollars into the state's access to counsel evictions fund so that they, we are able to have right, every tenant can have a right to counsel. Senate Bill Five Sixty Three, House Bill Seven Oh Three Rental Property Actions to Repossess Judgment for Tenants and Proof of Rental Licenseure. So to make sure that only people who have rental licenses would be able to evict, that's what this bill does. And it allows for each jurisdiction to have rental licensing programs, which we already do, and that landlords can only, only those that have rental licenses would be able to evict. And then landlord tenant wrongful detainer actions, Senate Bill Five Sixty Four, House Bill Six Ninety One. And this allows, renders facing eviction to seek a postponement of the trial for five days to connect to rental assistance, legal assistance, and other social services. Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. I move for immediate adoption.
You would like to suspend the rules first, right?
Excuse me, sorry. Excuse me. I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, the rules are now suspended. I yield the floor back to you, Councilwoman Ramos.
And I move for immediate adoption.
Madam Clerk, if you could please call a rule.
President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen.
Yes.
McCray. Yes. Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer. Middleton.
Yes.
Horrings.
Aye.
Burnett.
Yes.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
The motion is approved. The resolution has now been adopted. Madam Clerk, on to Twenty Two Dash Ninety Four R.
City Council Resolution Twenty Two Dash Zero Zero Nine Four R Approval for the Exchange of a Class BD seven license to a Class A seven license for use at eighteen oh seven through eighteen eleven Baker Street two one two one seven. For the purpose of providing the required approval under Maryland Annotated Code Alcoholic Beverages Section Twelve Nine Oh Two Point One D One to allow the license holder holding a valid Class BD seven beer, wine, and liquor license issued for use at eighteen oh seven eighteen eleven Baker Street, Baltimore, Maryland, twenty one twenty one seven to apply to the Board of Liquor License Commissioners for Baltimore City to exchange their Class BD seven beer, wine, and liquor license for a Class A seven beer, wine, and liquor license. Sponsor is Councilmember Torrance.
This resolution has been signed to Economic and Community Development Committee. You can find the consent calendar in section A at the back of your agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
All those. It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and calendar is now approved. We'll now move on to bills on second reader. At this point, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
There is a motion on the floor for us to go into short titles for the duration of the meeting. If we will be in short titles unless I hear any concerns or questions or unreadiness to that. Hearing none, we will be in short readers for, short reading title for the duration of the meeting. Madam Clerk, if you could please start on Economic Community Development Bill Twenty One Dash One Seven Nine.
Council Bill Twenty One Dash Zero One Seven Nine City Property Naming Escape Park in the Joseph H. Rash Playfield to be Jake's Skate Park.
At this point, I would like to recognize Madam Vice President. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill number twenty one dash oh one seven nine was heard on February eighth, twenty twenty two. I move the bill favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill is approved and will be printed for third reading. Going into Health, Environment, and Technology, Madam Clerk, please read in Twenty One Dash Six Four R.
Council Bill Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Six Four R Investigational Hearing Urban Fire.
At this point, I'd like to recognize Chairwoman McCray. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee held a hearing on the resolution on Wednesday, February ninth, twenty twenty two. I move the resolution favorably.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All at once. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill is approved and will be printed for, this resolution is adopted. This is a resolution. Now on to Council Bill Twenty One Dash Seven Nine R, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Seven Nine R informational hearing mold in housing.
Like to recognize Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you again, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee held a hearing on the resolution on Wednesday, February ninth, twenty twenty two. I move the resolution favorably.
Thank you, Chairwoman McCray. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and probably seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The resolution is now adopted. We're going to turn into third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the first bill for a third reading, Twenty One Dash One Zero One.
Twenty One Dash Zero One Zero One Corrective Bill Twenty Twenty One General. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, Twenty One Dash One Two Four.
Twenty One Dash Zero One Two Four Corrective Bill Twenty Twenty One Definitions, Rules of Interpretation, Time Computations. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, Twenty One Dash One Six Two.
Twenty One Dash Zero One Six Two Urban Renewal Brooklyn Curtis Bay Amendment. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved on the Twenty One Dash One Six Five, Madam Clerk.
Twenty One Dash Zero One Six Five South Baltimore Gateway Community Impact District and Management Authority. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, Twenty One Dash One Eight Three.
Twenty One Dash Zero One Eight Three Sale of Property W S S South Hanover Street. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to Twenty One Dash One Eight Seven and the last bill on third reader of the night.
Twenty One Dash Zero One Eight Seven Supplementary General Fund Capital Appropriation Department of Transportation, eighteen million. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. We're going to now turn to committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with any announcements that you would like to provide to the public. First up, Vice President of this city council and Chair of Economic Community Development, Ms. Sharon Green Middleton. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Economic and Community Development Committee will hold the following virtual WebEx hearings. On March fifteenth, twenty twenty two, at two oh five P M, Bill Number Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Eight Six R Approval for the Exchange of a Class BD seven license to a Class A license for use at twenty three forty three East Monument Street. Sponsor, Councilman Glover. And on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty two, at two P M, Bill Number Twenty One Dash Zero One Eight Five Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of Single Family Dwelling Unit to a B Dwelling Unit in the R eight zoning district variance twenty forty four Wallbrook Avenue. Sponsor, Councilman Torrance. And also at two oh five P M, Bill Number Twenty One Dash Oh One Eight Six A Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R seven zoning district variance sixteen thirty five Gwynne Falls Parkway. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next up, we're going to Education, Workforce, and Youth. Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Uh, no announcements, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, Health, Environment, and Technology, Chairwoman McCray.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee is rescheduling its first hearing on L O two two dash zero zero one nine Quarterly Legislative Oversight Hearing Department of Public Works from tomorrow, February twenty third, twenty twenty two at ten A M to Wednesday, March the ninth, twenty twenty two at ten A M. The committee will also hold a hearing on Resolution Two One Dash Zero Zero Eight Two R Investigative Hearing What is the State of Stat on Wednesday, March the sixteenth, twenty twenty two at ten A M. And the committee will hold a hearing on Bill Two One Dash Zero One Six One City Operations Net Zero Emissions of Greenhouse Gases on Wednesday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty two at ten oh one A M. All of the hearings will be conducted virtually through WebEx. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to now turn to Public Safety and Government Operations. Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, March second, twenty twenty two to hear Bill L O twenty one dash zero zero one two Baltimore City Fire Department E M T Firefighter Pre-Employment Screening and Hiring Process sponsored by myself. We'll be meeting one, at one P M virtually. The committee will also be hearing Bill Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Seven Four on Wednesday, March second, twenty twenty two at one oh one P M virtually. And this is the Office of Emergency Management as an independent agency. This is sponsored by myself. The committee will be hearing Bill Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Five Five R An Informational Hearing on Holding Gun Offenders Accountable, sponsored by Councilmember Stokes at two P M virtually. The committee will also be hearing Bill Twenty One Dash Zero Zero Seven Eight R Investigative Hearing Baltimore City, Baltimore Police Department Disciplinary and Complaint Process on Wednesday, March twenty third, twenty twenty two at one P M virtually. And this is at the request of Councilmember Burnett. The committee will be hearing Bill Twenty Two, Twenty Two Dash Zero One Nine One Homeless Shelters and Transitional Housing Units Human Trafficking Notice Requirements on Wednesday, March twenty third, twenty twenty two at one oh one P M virtually at the request of Councilmember Burnett. The committee will be hearing L O twenty one dash zero 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 six Quarterly Crime Stats and Violence Prevention Plan sponsored by myself at one P M virtually on Wednesday, March thirtieth. This meeting was rescheduled from last week. The committee will be hearing L O twenty two dash zero zero two five Baltimore Police Department Five Year Crime Reduction Strategy at the request of myself on Wednesday, March thirtieth at one oh one P M virtually. The committee would also be hearing L O twenty one dash zero zero one five Baltimore City Fire Department EMS Stat and Operations at the request of myself on Wednesday, April sixth, twenty twenty two at one P M virtually. at the request of myself on Wednesday, April sixth, twenty-twenty-two, at one P M virtually. The committee will be hearing twenty-one dash zero one six-three, study and report evaluation of the emergency medical system, services system at the request of Councilmember Burnett, at one oh one P M virtually. And the committee will be hearing Bill twenty-two dash zero one nine nine firefighter safety act at the request of Councilmember McCray on Wednesday, April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at one P M virtually. And the committee will be hearing Bill twenty-two dash zero zero nine zero R informational hearing, Fire Department, Office of the Chief, annual review at the request of Councilmember McCray, at one oh one P M virtually. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam, Mr. Chair. At this point, we're going to rules legislative oversight. Chair Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on Bill number C C twenty-two dash zero zero eight seven R on Thursday, March third, at one P M for an informational hearing of the Office of the Chief Administrative Officer.
That conclude your announcements?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And then last but certainly not least, ladies and means, Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. No announcements this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members, I do have a couple announcements for work sessions of committee as a whole. Committee as a whole will meet virtually on Monday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two at five P M for work session on Bill twenty-one dash one-seven-two homestead, homesteading program. Committee as a whole will also meet virtually on Monday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, at five oh one for work session on twenty-one dash zero one seven three Baltimore City Home Repairs Grant Program. Committee as a whole will also meet virtually on Monday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, at five oh two for work session on twenty-one dash one seven four Baltimore City Senior Homeowners Grant Program. Committee as a whole will meet virtually on Wednesday, March the second, two thousand twenty-two, at five P M for work session on Bill twenty-one dash one-seven-two urban's homesteading program. The committee as a whole will meet virtually on Wednesday, March second, two thousand twenty-two, at five oh one for work session on Bill number twenty-one dash one-seven-three Baltimore City Home Repairs Grant Program. And lastly, the committee as a whole will meet virtually on Wednesday, March the second, two thousand twenty-two, at five oh two for a work session on Bill twenty-one dash one-seven-four Baltimore City Senior Homeowners Grant Program. We would now like to recognize any members for regular announcements. Are there any regular announcements from the floor? Hearing and seeing no regular announcements, I'd like to recognize Madam Vice President, Sharon Green-Milton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have, just since I was, I'm last, I do have an announcement. So and a number of you probably know Israel Kason, which suddenly passed away today, earlier this morning. And if you're not familiar with Israel Kason, he has been a long-serving warrior, caring person in this city that really helped some of our most vulnerable population, ex-offenders, people addicted to drugs, homelessness. He experienced all of those things early in life and started an organization called I Can We Can, which has been operating for many, many years. I'd say at least twenty, thirty years in Park Heights, on Park Heights Avenue. In fact, that intersection of Wiley and Park Heights was basically named after him. This particular news has really hit the whole Northwest area. He is just, no, he was a very strong proponent of the apprenticeship program, had his own construction company, helped to get those vulnerable people acclimated into jobs and trying to be self-sufficient. So he will be a great loss to the city as, you know, hopefully those things will continue through his legacy. So just wanted to do that shout out. And so I'll move on. So the next council meeting will be held on Monday, March seventh, twenty-twenty-two, at five P M. And may we have a moment of silence for Mr. Israel Kason and his family, Chief Charles R. Paylor that was announced from Councilwoman McCray. And also may we continue to pray for the families of the now forty-nine homicides to date in twenty-twenty-two and our prayers to the families that continue to suffer from the opioid epidemic suicides, just the trauma that we continue to have in our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. At this time, we'll take a moment of silence. Thank you for that moment of silence. There being no new business before the desk, this concludes the twenty-eighth meeting of your seventy-third term of this Baltimore City Council. Baltimore City, we absolutely love you. Good night.